I will call this meeting of Christiansburg Town Council to order. As customary in our regular meetings, we're going to take a moment of reflection, meditate on the issues of yours, ours, and then deal with everyone. Thank you. This is Rice from Feds of Lees. I'm going to ask Councilman Harry Collins if he will lead us into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first is an ordinance to amend and clarify Chapter 42 zoning for the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to the definition of a kennel. Is there anyone here to address this tonight? Mr. Warren? Is this something you... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Wallace, go ahead and say...
Go ahead, because you're going to address something. Maybe I'll get to answer my questions there.
Okay, very good. Straightforward. It would change the term adult in the definition of kennel. If this is about a six-month numeric age, when dogs and cats begin to count towards the maximum number of dogs and cats allowed to be kept on premises before constituting a kennel use. As you may recall, there was some difficulty enforcing a kennel use recently because it came into question what an adult dog was with the number of dogs that would be allowed to be kept in a house and to be considered a kennel. So this would clarify that definition and make it easier to follow up on from a staff perspective. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or counsel may have.
Chris?
Mainly, I was kind of questioning, why are we redefining kennel when the state's already defined it for us? That gave... Yeah. 3.2-6500 of the Virginia Code definitions says kennel means any establishment in which five or more canines, felons, or hybrids of either a captive of purpose, breeding, hunting, training, renting, buying, boarding, selling, or showing. The state's already defined it. I mean, why do we need a kennel if we're defining it? Because as I understand, the way the state works is they have to grant you specific authorities to do things, and they do that under 3.2-6543. Governing body of any locality may adopt certain ordinances. And then that goes to Chapter 65, Comprehensive Kennel Character. And I highlighted all the things that it allows you to do, and you could even make them stricter than what they put in there. But I don't see the need to reinvent the wheel.
I think basically that's what the ordinance is written, is instead of five or more, it's more than four.
Correct.
And it used to be more than five. I'm sorry, it may not be my turn to speak.
You're fine. You're welcome to answer this. Because I sure could.
When I read it earlier before the meeting, it basically says the same thing, I think. Maybe not exactly the same words, but the same... It's five, there's four, more than four dogs for breeding, or cats, no cats or dogs for breeding.
Or training.
Or training.
Yeah.
But I mean, because given that, you know, as I understand it, the town of Christiansburg can't come and say, "Well, we've decided that within the town limits of Christiansburg, a DUI without..." You're not allowed to do that. You're not allowed to redefine what the state has defined. And the county, in what Drew prepared online for the agenda packet, in the comparisons, Montgomery County verbatim uses the state's definition of kennel. It says other kennels. I don't understand why we have to be special and create our own instead of just going with it. The state's already done for us. Why create us to work for ourselves? And especially, you know, as I understand it, the best and the court case and everything else, a judge may look at it and he may go, "Well, your definition doesn't match. The state says this is what it is. Your definition doesn't match, so your definition is wrong." At least from what I've seen in courts, that's, you know, in the state of Virginia, that's just how things seem to be.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Appreciate it. Anyone else to address the kennel item?
I can explain that.
Okay, Madam Attorney?
Yeah, the kennel definition that he's referring to is in the animal, comprehensive animal statutes, which is a completely different situation. What we're talking about tonight is zoning, and this is the definition of kennel for the purposes of our zoning ordinance. So it's really comparing apples to oranges. And the comprehensive animal ordinance does allow you to change the definition of kennel. You can make more stringent requirements than they allow under that, the state statute, and specifically authorize them to the state statute.
Is that the difference between commercial and residential?
No, he's talking about kennel in the context of the animal statutes under Virginia law. What we're talking about tonight is an amendment to our zoning ordinance. It's a completely different... It talks about uses within our, you know, within the residential areas. It's a completely separate issue. So, yeah, the state statutes don't talk about the definition of kennel for the purposes of zoning. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Next is a public hearing regarding the fee increase for garbage fees from $17 to $22 a month for provision of curbside recycling beginning January 1, 2018. Is anyone here...
July.
Yeah, July 1. Anybody here to address that issue? Hearing done. Public hearing for adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 28 Solid Waste of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to curbside recycling. Mr. Warren, is this yours?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Probably more mine.
Or yours?
Okay.
Is there anyone to address this item? Thank you. Mr. Wingfield, let you explain personally.
This is basically to provide for curbside recycling in town, simply to allow provision and include recycling carts in addition to town garbage carts in the ordinance. And of course, you can, you do have a copy of the ordinance there in front of you. If you have any questions, be glad to ask, or anybody is to accommodate the curbside Right now, our ordinance is specific to curbside garbage collection.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I really think, and Henry has a lot to be responsible for this, he has driven this car, and I really think that curbside recycling is one of the best things that council, if we do this, has done since I've been here. And I really feel that curbside is going to pay off in a number of ways. You're going to restrict your garbage, the amount of garbage that we have, so thereby less will be going into the landfills. And when you have less going into the landfills, then the landfills will last longer. And also, this will be, recycling will actually go and be recycled and done over. And I think that, and there's been indications in the past of people who have done this, that the amount of recycling, quadruples or whatever number you want to use, when they use this curbside pickup, more and more people will do it. And I think it's just another thing that makes this town, better quality in this town, and I'm all for it. I think it's just good. It is a user fee of $5 more, but I think everybody is going to get their money's worth out of it, I believe you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address?
Well, I'm looking back, we're going to discuss the fee now or later on when it gets down to discussion and action by council, because I have some concerns.
We're not going to discuss it here. We'll discuss it in action by council, if we vote on it tonight.
Thank you. I'll make sure.
Under the consent agenda, we have five items for your review. Sending a public hearing minutes from the February 27 meeting. Rescheduling public hearing for regional solid waste authority articles incorporation, approval of UV disinfectant system service contract with Haven and Sawyer, and resolutions for the Christiansburg High School wrestling team, the individual state champions, and two individual state champions for indoor track and field, two young ladies.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll say. A motion of second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let's say thank you. And I have, we have scheduled the wrestlers and the track state champions to come before us on the 27th.
I believe you didn't mention item B, the Coxdale Agreement, long-term.
Oh, Coxdale Agreement. Y'all have the Coxdale Agreement?
Yes.
Yep, we're good. We're good. All right, this is the citizens' comments section where we open the floor for citizens' comments, concerns, questions, suggestions. We ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and commit your time to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address council? There are no one. Close citizens' comments. Introductions and presentations. We have Barry Helms, former town manager, Barry Helms, to provide an update on the Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority. Should we stand for him? I won't rise. Should I turn that light on? There's a light that's not on back there. It looks pretty dark in here. I know, Barry, we did that in your honor because you used to never let anybody turn any lights on, so...
Concern electricity.
Nothing wrong with saving a dollar, right?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to serve on the solid waste authority and continue talking trash. I enjoy doing that, sir.
I know your passions.
And I'm very excited about the curbside recycling. When that came up, it was one of the goals, so... So, the package of recycling, now we're hiring the recycling down around up to RBS. Called it hub and spoke. We're one of the spokes going into the hub and delivering the recyclables. It's working well. Packing trailers will allow us to make less trips, so... And the last standout in half page three is some of the... In the bottom, you'll see that the team went up about 40 times, so that was good. On our recycling, our recycling rate, or rejection rate is very low, less than a tenth of a percent. And that's because the staff and the citizens do a very good job of screening and informing the recycle, so that ten times the trash, or ten times the recycle goes to the landfill because there's a few, you know, 500 pounds of bad stuff in it. So we appreciate the good work of the staff and citizens. Any questions?
Does all of Christiansburg's trash go out to the...
Yes, by contract, we have to deliver all of our recycling and solid waste to the solid waste authority.
And do we provide trash collection beyond our town limits?
Yes, on a limited basis only. If the garbage trucks are already passing by the residence.
Okay. Barry, you might not know this, but do you know how much single stream Blacksburg puts in since they've had a curbside? I mean, is it...
Don't think I have that in mind.
Oh, it's no worries. Would you wager a guess?
No.
Is it even close to...
Still preserving, isn't it?
You don't want to guess.
I can find out.
Okay. You want mine? I'd like, I'm just curious, see how much it'll increase.
This is all in, like, the brush, 98.6? That's tons?
Yes, sir.
Barry, Mr. Helms, I appreciate the report, and we are well represented on that board with your knowledge and your technical background, so for one, I appreciate what you're doing for us. Absolutely. I appreciate you showing up. We've never had a solid waste authority member show up and tell us what's going on.
I've been in town for about four months, but...
We appreciate it, Barry.
I'm lazy now. I don't want to go out a few tonight.
We know we're in good hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I don't think we showed on the agenda, but we have the Christiansburg High School student government.
It is on the revised agenda.
Yes. I didn't get it. Oh, I know, okay. So, Christiansburg High School, young ladies and gentlemen, why are we here? Please stand.
Hello.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Give us your names.
Okay, I'm Molly.
I'm Courtney.
Zoe.
And what's your last names?
Oh, I'm Molly Strong.
Courtney Wright.
Zoe Vidal.
So, we're part of the Student Government Association, and...
Of what you do there? What's your, you know, what's your job for them?
Well, I was elected historian.
And then we're just reps, so...
Okay. Oh, and that's a good thing. You're rep, not just reps. Important reps.
This is my first year on student government, so I'm still getting a hang of it, but we typically meet every Tuesday with our sponsor, Angie Robbins, if you know her. We do things like dodgeball tournaments, camp food drives, volleyball tournament. So we pretty much just raise money. We did, we walked in the Veterans Day Parade. Yeah, we've been doing a lot of stuff now. And we've been working at town council, so that's a great opportunity.
Right before, too. That is, that is. You got anything to ask of us that we can do for you? Except for money?
Yeah.
So what do you have going on with the school over the next month?
Actually, this week, we're, tomorrow we have the nationwide walkout for the shooting in Florida.
So what do you have constructive going on with this school?
The only thing we've been working on is that and the dodgeball tournament, trying to get groups to work in that. The money that we raise from that will go to a charity, I'm not sure which one right now, but that's what we've been working on right now.
Have you heard anything about a parade, or any town for the champions in Christiansburg? Not just wrestling, but you know, the champions of all sports.
A parade?
Academic, yeah, have you heard anything about that?
Uh, no, I have not.
Okay, would you like to hear something about it?
Yeah.
Would you want to help us on that?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So Molly, what's your future plans? I know you're a senior.
Um, I'm planning to go to a BMI hall.
Super.
That's right.
Those are my plans, so far.
That's right.
I'm going to Virginia Tech. Not exactly sure what I'm going to do yet, but I'm going there.
And you work part-time with the rep, correct?
Yeah, I do.
And Zoe? You're a junior, right?
I don't know how to figure it out yet.
So, Molly, with you going, that's what, four? Five in the family?
Five, yes.
Five, because your sister graduated a year or two ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your dad, your uncle?
My dad, my uncle, and my grandpa.
Isn't that awesome?
Which, he was mayor of Christiansburg, so...
Oh, Charlie. Boy, I'm sorry. Yes. So, you know what you're getting into, then I assume.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Good luck to all of you, and we'll see you back in Henry. So what do you guys think about this curbside recycling program we're getting here ready a little while?
I think it's good.
Yeah. I think it'll improve the environment.
That's right.
And please tell your fellow students that we look at this as one of the bright spots of what we do now, you know, up to y'all, you know, this is good stuff, really is.
Well, we look forward to coming here.
Good. Good. See you next time.
We'd love to see your teacher at one time, too, if she could come with you.
We'll let her know.
Anything else for these young ladies? It's always a pleasure having representatives from the high school, because you all are, hopefully, one day will be sitting where we're sitting. May I ask one other question? Certainly, sure. Are you, are any of you juniors or below?
I'm a junior.
Zoe's a junior?
Yes.
One idea, I went to high school in Blacksburg, but it was many years ago, but one idea that we had was maybe next year or something, one thing is you could, you could run, have town council elections, y'all could run town for the day, have a student government day. It's where you actually would have the same issues that we have, make decisions and advise us, but you could have one day, student government day, that you have your own elections and, or, you know, run town government, have, elect the mayor and council members to come down and run town, and just an idea we had here a little bit ago, but I think that would be really, I mean, something for you to think about and plan for next year could be sort of a big deal. Our public relations director is very good at that because the fifth grade schools here in Christiansburg did a town council when they elected their council members and mayor and all. So they had three different schools that had three different town council meetings, and it's pretty, it's pretty impressive, wasn't it, Melissa? It's really good. So that's, so if you need something, I'm sure she could help you with it. Okay. Something to think about. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, committee reports. Anything going, guys? Henry? Uh, Harry?
Yes, sir. I'll find my notes. Might not be anything going. Here they are. I went to the, uh, we're going to start having the bike share program is going to start in April. There's going to be two sites in town. One's going to be the rec center and one's going to be the mall. And we're going to have orange bikes and white bikes, and 75 old bikes right now. And the more we get, more information, we find out, we'll put it out, too. But it's supposed to start in a couple of months, so...
So, from rec, from rec...
可以从rec, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be exciting for everybody. And Blacksburg is going to have six, six stages, I think, over there. Yeah, so that'd be good.
Pretty good. Mr. Bishop?
We have a couple items from the finance committee. The first one, we had a marathon meeting yesterday, it was probably three and a half hours plus, and knocked out a bunch of stuff, getting ready for a budget, and the staff has done a great job. In fact, I'd say 11 years, this is as good as it's been, coming to us in the form that it's in. But you'll, you'll get more details on this, but a couple items we need to bring to your attention is the community donations, community support, and Randy, I did, I brought a binder, but I didn't bring that, the sheet from yesterday, she has to remind me what else. But I did one thing, we want to, we're going to be polling council members on the same way we did last year, was the community donations. The requests are, everything is organized and vows, put it all together, a nice packet. And have they received that, haven't they, or not? Have they received, yeah. So you've received that. Randy, Mr. Wingfield will be polling council, and you'll be asked to state your level of support for each of these organizations, and then they will be, the staff will be incorporating the consensus, the consensus into the final, the final budget package, the draft budget package you get. And Randy, what else were we going to supposed to talk?
Aquatics, pay, per...
Oh, yeah. The aquatic, there's been, we spent quite a bit of discussion time about some of our challenges in hiring part-time employees, and Blacksburg Transit has a part-time in Blacksburg. We have a particularly challenging time of lifeguards. After much discussion and recognizing that lifeguards have specialized training and they are first responders, we are upping, we're recommending, need council's blessing to up the starting pay for lifeguards to $10 an hour with a 25 cent raise for each year for three years.
I was at the meeting when the aquatic board met last week, and that was a big topic of discussion, and I believe that the lifeguards have not had a raise since the aquatic center has been open. Was Mr. Williams, is that a correct statement?
I believe that's correct.
I think that is a correct statement, and so I think that's one good thing, and it is, it is so competitive to get these lifeguards, you know, especially when the summer comes around and all these different other things. And I, the whole board felt good about it, and I agree with what you guys have done.
So is this just a thumbs up or thumbs down? Do we need a voice vote? Or the recommendation the finance committee is to, is to authorize a starting pay for lifeguards of $10 per hour?
And it's, this is now, it's not subject to the new budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
It will be incorporated in the new budget, but we'd like to do that now so we can hire part-time employees that we're having a challenging time to recruit right now, because our pay is less than...
Everybody pretty good with that?
I'll make a motion if you need one.
Are we okay? Is everyone, is anyone opposed? Let's put it that way. Okay. Mr. Wingfield, is that the, those are the two biggies?
That's it.
Okay.
Sign fund downs, we talked about it at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, yes. Do we, do you have that, Mr. Martin?
I do not.
Yeah?
I do.
Did you have glasses?
With my glasses. I'll get the red paper.
There's a...
And it really, we had so many papers going on last night.
Seems it was a second binder.
Yeah, Wash is looking for that. I just want to tell the public, it works and great, you know.
As always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what was initially presented in value, you can correct me when I get done, but...
And it really, we had so many papers going on last night.
Seems it was a second binder.
Yeah, Black's looking for that, I just wanna tell the public works.
I've got it.
And great, you know. As always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what was initially presented in value, you can correct me when I get done, but the recreation reserve, a million dollars, wastewater treatment plant reserve, a million dollars, software reserve, five hundred thousand, capital projects reserve, a million, and street reserve, five hundred.
And that was the recommendation after we did the presentation of the audit report back in December?
Yes.
And we just never took action on it?
Yeah, and these can be moved around at any time by council, but we're earmarking those based on the audit report, and finance committee renewed those yesterday, and we feel that they're appropriate, and we need, um, staff needs council's blessing to earmark those that Mr. Showalter specified. Anyone opposed?
Yeah.
See a better question? Yeah, if anyone's opposed, if not, well, that's it. So, look forward to the budget, we should be getting one the second meeting in March, is that right? And the staff has done an outstanding job with, uh, with that this year.
We'd like to thank Randy and Val and staff, but it was done very well. So the next meeting will be for council, not for the finance committee.
That's right, that's a record, that's a record, we've only had one meeting on that this year.
Very good.
Fantastic, okay, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Hubbard? Well, the only I have to say is, uh, that at the aquatic center on, on Friday is gonna be, um, a donation for cancer for real-life life, and you can come over there and, and swim or water walk, anytime between eight in the morning and six at night, and with donations, and we're also gonna try to swim or water walk a total of everybody who, who gets involved, twenty miles. So hoping to wait, raise a little bit of money for cancer, and also do a little swimming and walking. That's this Friday.
Ms. Sacks?
Tomorrow, we have our central business committee meeting, and welcome anybody to attend. Um, our main focus at the moment is the farmer's market, amongst some other issues that we're pulling together to address in the future. And I believe tonight, we'll be talking the majority about wastewater, that's a big topic, so no point to get into it at the moment. Thank you.
All righty, very good. Under discussions by, and actions by Mayor and council, first is, uh, council action on agreement to amend Montgomery Reg- Regional Solid Waste Authority articles of incorporation?
Mr. Mayor, I ask that you consider this at the April twenty-fourth meeting after the hearing, since we're rescheduling.
So, I, my copy is not the amended agenda, okay? Very good. Council action, uh, on increased to garbage, increased to garbage fees from seventeen to twenty-two dollars for provision, uh, curbside recycling beginning July one, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, I have said, I need to, I'm, first of all, I wanna say that I'm not opposed to curbside recycling, all right? My concern is, at one time, I thought I heard that this was gonna be optional, is that people can volunteer to do it, then I hear that it's gonna be mandatory that they do it. My concern is having people that don't wanna participate still pay the five dollars increase. I mean, I understand that the more people we get to participate, the cheaper our fee's gonna be, but I just have a hard time making it mandatory for somebody to pay for something that they choose not to use. And once again, I'm not opposed to recycling program.
I'm happy to answer a little bit, if you like. We had discussed that as well, and for us, uh, the committee, uh, Mr. Showalter.
Along with the staff. We had several public meetings, none of them, I just wanted to throw that in there.
Okay, yeah, we did have some public meetings on it as well, um, but for us to get the price that we did at the extremely good way it was for all of the community that gets trash, it'd be very difficult to pick and choose those that want to do it and don't want to do it. Um, we would never have been able to get to the rate that we did if we were able to a la carte, so to speak. So, I completely understand the concern, but, but that's why, the closest competition was fifteen dollars a month. You know, so if we pick and choose, then the rates for everybody were to go up considerably.
To those? Yeah. Okay, so there were several public meetings.
Yes, sir.
Advertised.
Yes.
Listen, I've had, I've had the same concerns, if, if we do this, Mr. Bishop, I do have the same concerns about, uh, five dollars is a lot of money to some, to some people on a monthly basis, especially when it is compulsory. I understand that, and last year, we had the stormwater fee, and now this year, it's this, and they're big deals to, to people, and they, and we need, I mean, it's a, it's a serious concern. Uh, two, two thoughts for your benefit, Mr. Bishop, along these lines is, and, and first of all, I'm not in favor of voting on this tonight, I'd rather wait and see if we, if we have any, any, uh, further comments from the public on this. But, uh, two thoughts is, people can still, we have ten thousand water customers, we only have seven thousand trash customers, so there's still people that are opting away, that are, they still have the option, you don't have to have trash collection. Okay, so about seventy percent of our water customers are trash customers, but not a hundred percent, so there's, I feel good about that. If someone really feels strongly about it, then they can, you know, they can, uh, you know, they can handle their own trash and, and, you know, avoid that fee, uh, and the, uh, the second consideration is, the, the five dollars, uh, the five dollars, if we do this, some of the benefits that she mentioned were, it reduces our, the, or, Mr. Hubbard mentioned, our landfill reduces that, but also, we're going to be looking at, uh, if waste management does, if our, if the vendor does a good job at this, we're gonna consider privatizing, or at least consider privatizing all of our trash collection, and see if the overall cost might come down for everything.
We do, it automatically come down, because we wouldn't be willing for it. I mean, I mean, it would be a contract.
I don't know, how to.
I, I don't know, that would be my assumption, but.
But, uh, I do, you know, that's one thing we've talked about in the past, but there's a possibility, if this, if this is sort of a foray or a, a test program to see how a private company does collection, and if they do it well, then we might be able to consider privatizing all of our trash collection and save more money that way, and, you know, as well as benefits to that, too, so those, those couple things, um, have me leaning, you know, I wanna, I think it's a good step for the community, and five dollars is more affordable than, like you say, fifteen or so. And if, I'm, I'm only one person, I prefer not to vote tonight, but I would vote if everyone else is ready to vote. If I'm the only one, I don't wanna be hold up, but I would like, I sort of would like to see, with the five dollar fee, I'd like to see if there's any other, uh, major concerns out there that haven't been addressed, and even, I didn't know this evening that you've already had some public meetings. Did people actually show up for those?
Other than us and staff.
So you didn't have any citizens show up?
No.
It was advertised, it's put out on the notifications, like any other committee.
Well, I'm, with that being said, I just, after that, I'm ready to vote on it this evening, I, we do it, citizens can opt out of everything, we only have seventy percent of our citizens are act, or seventy percent of our water citizens are actually trash citizens. Plus, I think this is a step to see if privatization of this aspect is successful, then maybe we can do it on a broader scale, and outsource, you know, the, the other residential trash collection, okay?
For you people in the audience who are not that familiar, is what it's gonna be, you'll have a special container, uh, all in blue, and it, well, they'll come and pick it up every two weeks, twice a month, they'll get your retired recycling stuff, okay? And, and so it'll be, and it'll be on the same day as your garbage day, so you'll be pretty well, you know, aware of when to, to load it up and have a pretty, so it's gotta be very easy for everybody, and very convenient, and I think it's gonna be very, uh,
Separate truck for that?
Impressive what we get.
It's a private contractor. That's his, the, we looked at, uh, Barry mentioned it, Barry leave already? No, there he is. We, years ago, we had looked into doing it ourselves, but fiscally, it was unattainable.
We couldn't do it for that price.
Right.
Twelve, twelve percent or something like that.
Right, and sort of on a tangent, we're, you know, your solid waste committee, civil water, we're looking at the whole gamut. Commercial, solid waste, or trash disposal, we're, we're looking at everything this year, to see sort of cost savings, uh, and that, of course, is in tandem with staff helping out with that, but I believe this is something popular, it's something I've, it's been on my agenda since I've come on council, and it's just not me, it's, it's the citizens of the town that I've heard from, whether going door to door back in two thousand eight, and again, over the last two times, or three times I've been elected, or two times I've been reelected, it's something that you see young professionals, and it's a cornerstone in our, our motto, progressive, small town, and that's best, and people moving into our community, they expect a curbside recycling program, and that's one of the reasons I asked Barry that question, because I think you'll be amazed on what Blacksburg recycles compared to what we do.
You know, if, uh, anybody's looking for a motion to vote on it tonight, I will be, will, to.
Is that a motion to, uh, increase the fee from seventeen to twenty-two?
Yes, sir, uh-huh, for curbside recycling.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Burke?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Miss five-one, thank you very much, gentlemen. Council action on curbside recycling, recycling services with Waste Industries Incorporated?
The contract is in, uh, in council packet, and we do have representatives from Waste Industries here, if you have any questions, but this is, of course, to accommodate the recent, curbside recycling program.
And you could maybe ask them your, your question, and how much they anticipate, um, recycling out from the town of Christiansburg.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, I'm Pat Luce with Waste Industries, I'm our government contracts manager, and Robert Wachler, he's the general manager, uh, at our local branch in Brooklyn, with Bill, and here in Christiansburg. Typically, what we see, and it, it does vary with municipalities, but you're looking anywhere from a thirty-five to a forty percent increase in, in recycling, and the, uh, gentleman stated, uh, the ease of convenience and having a ninety-five gallon container just makes it so much easier than, than some of the small ones are, are, are trying to take things out to yourself, so, uh, it's single stream, so it's, it's a no-brainer, it's, it's easy to do, and it doesn't, uh, it's not gonna be on a different day or anything like that, so, uh, we're really excited about the opportunity, and, uh, for all the reasons you guys mentioned, and, uh, you know, we're looking forward to our service, and have the greatest price in the world, but as you guys stated, this is kind of a, a, you know, a show-me type thing, so, uh, we're, uh, we're really excited about showing you what we can do as far as, uh, service in the town.
Yeah, I understand you say the containers will be ninety-five gallon sizes?
Yes, yes, sir.
There'd be an option for a sixty-five gallon cart, uh?
Yes, especially if you're seniors.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we try to give you a sixty-five or thirty-five gallon cart, and, uh, makes a lot of sense for a Ford, but what we saw, um, with other, other locations, when they went from, uh, dual recycling, and then mixed it all together, it increased about twenty-five percent, so, that's quite a bit. And then also, it helps you from paying the landfill, so it's like a double-edged sword, you're making money off of recycling to a certain extent, instead of paying the tipping fees, instead of, you know, recycling trash.
So did you all go over, I, I know that our public works guys that pick up the, the garbage, there's some, a lot, several senior citizens in town that cannot
Yes.
Handle the trash cans, do you, do you have that agreement that you will move them down?
Yes, yes, sir, we do.
We know the ones that, that you're doing, okay.
We consider it bankrolling, uh, things, so, yeah, I think, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's like a two hundred ounce, a hundred fifty.
Somewhere around there, it's court assistance.
Yeah, not very many, so, it's no problem.
That you're willing to do that also?
Yes, and then also, I think it was Randy, or maybe Jim, we talked about, all the churches in the area, we're gonna donate all of theirs, too.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so.
Now, would that be in the water bill or something like that, of what size container a person wants?
You'd receive the ninety-two gallon cart as the standard, although you could request a sixty-five gallon cart.
They say we deal with, uh.
Same thing as that, yeah.
Ninety-six and sixty-five.
He said there's also a thirty-five.
There is thirty-five, yeah, no, I don't, we haven't talked about it, but.
We never talked about a thirty-five. That's actually not included in the ordinance as drafted, although we could certainly add that if you like.
Thirty-five doesn't make a ton of sense when you're doing.
I think that was our thoughts, it's just such a small cart, you aren't gonna be able to put much in it.
I do have a, a question, uh, when we were in our meetings, we had talked about customer service.
Yes.
Um, what happens if somebody does have a complaint? I mean, we know what our, what happens within the town now, but what is your policy if someone calls up and didn't get a pickup or something goes wrong?
Well, we got two great things. It depends on, and we'll, we'll negotiate this with Jim and Randy, we got a portal system, which you will have, um, they will point so many people that can have, um, um, access to it, and what it is, is when somebody complains, they can call into your office, they can put it on this portal, and it automatically gets sent to me and two of my representatives. So, by the end of the day, at the end of the day, we go back, fix the cart, bring, bring them a new one, or switch out. Uh, the first thirty days, you'll have all the ninety-five, six, ninety-five gallon carts out, and they can just call, make the email to us, and we'll get switched out that day.
It's kind of a thing we wanted to.
Town would have access to that portal, too.
Yes, and y'all have access to it.
Thank you.
And, uh, the, the portal is also capable of generating reports, tonnage reports, and, and things like that, too. You know, and then the other thing is, we, we talked about as far as customer service, is a, uh, a last call into the town before we leave the town.
Right.
And the other nice thing is, of course, we're, we're located right here, so, uh, we're, uh, we're just a stone's toss away, so, uh.
Yeah, we, we're just right up here in the, uh, Norwood Village.
Yeah.
Yes.
And there'll be an education program for the public, Melissa, you'll work with them, and of course, I'm sure you have.
Yes, and, uh, and Teresa Swain with Marshall, she's gonna do a big, um, um, teaching thing also, I talked to her today, and said we was having this meeting, so she's on board also, and they've got some great, great teams.
Oh, great.
So they go to the schools, go to, like, the aquatic center, go to all the locations, Melers, and then also Pamperance. Uh, when your cart's delivered, you'll have a, a calendar, you can stick on your refrigerator, tells you what week you're gonna be picked up, all that good stuff.
We even have a cool little website for, uh, for the kids, and it's, it's generated for maybe the sixth grade, and under, it's called Eco Kids, and, you know, we have found that reaching the kids first, they sometimes drive the parental behavior on, uh, on recycling. Uh, so, it's really good to start that, but it's, uh, it's just a website that explains recycling to, to them, and it's got games and coloring and little quizzes and stuff like that, so, anyway, just grassroots, starting young and, and working its way up, so that's, uh, just another little thing that we do.
Oh, one more question here, I know you don't want me to bring this up, how about somebody throws garbage in your recycling bin? Is that, how does that affect you, though?
Well, it depends, if they throw a lot in it and we don't see it, we, it, it ends up in recycling. But our, um, uh, waste per load is very minimal, we've only had maybe one rejection since we've been doing this, which is awesome.
It was, it was really, it was really encouraging to hear the, I guess, from Barry, the, uh, the.
Contamination.
That's, that is some of the best figures I've, I've heard, I, I handle Delaware, Maryland, uh, North Carolina, and Virginia, and, uh, that is just, that's a fantastic job that, uh, that people around here are doing.
But if, uh, if we would come up to a, um, a resident that has garbage in it and we see it, we would leave them a sticker note, it's a note that tied onto the can, and this is why your can wasn't picked up, so, and then also, we got a little tag we rip off, and we have to manage, so.
That also gets entered into the, uh, into the municipal report, um, as far as history, too.
Yes.
You might, is this suggestion with that, I think this is a great, and I didn't know y'all were here tonight, but I'd like to see how this goes and see if there's, you know, more, but when, you know, those violations occur, and you're putting a tag on it and so forth?
Yes.
It might even be good to take a picture of what you're doing, so that someone's not gonna, okay, you do that, yeah.
Well, reason for is, after your first or second call to one house, you take this picture because I mean.
No, I mean, just to help everybody, keep, you know, keep everything.
Exactly.
Objective and factual.
And then I think Jim's going to be my contact. If we got any problems with any things that's turned over when we got there, we give him a call and let him know. And then also, if there's any mess ups, like, I'll be honest, the first week we was in Blacksburg, somebody threw a gallon of paint away, you know?
Yeah.
Well, it ran out, so of course we had to make a phone call, but we stopped, had fuel kit, safety, you know, made sure the environment didn't get hurt and you just handle that down. But you always have one contact. If he's off, I'll have his backup.
Got you. We want it to be successful.
It'll run smooth once we get the crinkles put out. The good thing is, everything will be delivered. The town of Christiansburg don't do nothing. We do it all.
Very good. All right, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
All right, so we now take action on the contract.
I need a motion. I make motion that we approve the contract of curbside recycling services with Waste Industries Incorporated.
Motion in a second. Comments?
I'd like to thank the solid, our solid waste committee for taking this up and letting me on some other stuff I didn't know that you already had and some public meetings on it. Be more comfortable to support it. So, thanks.
Very good. Anyone else? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Number six, oh, thank you very much. Council action and adoption of an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight solid waste to the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to curbside recycling. That's the ordinance that we have in front of us. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So do.
Motion in a second to approve chapter twenty-eight solid waste to the Town Code. Any other comments or questions? If not, Madam Clark, thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Number six, oh, thank you very much. Staff reports, town manager?
I'd just like to point out that our finance department's received a award in regards to our comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR. It is from the Government Financing Office Association and it's a certificate, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting and this is the sixth year in a row that they've received it.
Very good statement.
How many years have you been here about?
Six years.
Seven, actually. It took a while to get.
It's a good year.
No, I've been here nine years. It took us a couple of years before we could get to what we can do now.
You got a full way out.
Thank you for your hard work.
That's right.
It's very evident that what that, what the department's doing, time we get reports or whatever, I mean, it's, they're on top of it. I'm not saying anything about my slush fund, Val, but it's all right, I keep wanting it, but anyway.
Is this easier or harder than a casino to operate?
Probably not as much fun, but.
I don't know. It's just different. Worldly different.
We love you, Val, and you know that. You guys have great background and right here.
I'd like to set an additional public hearing for closing of Hickok Street for April 10th.
For when?
April 10th.
Okay. Tonight, guys?
Yeah. He made that presentation last week, last meeting, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
I have nothing.
We're working on the ordinances this week. Any other staff here that would like to report? Have a report, anyone? Very good. Council reports, Ms. Sax?
I currently have nothing new.
Okay. Yeah. What do you report, Mayor?
Just for me, just appreciate all the staff who showed up this day and, of course, the mayor and Marissa for sticking around and Brad. That was a marathon, couple of meetings from yesterday, so, but it was great. That was, that was a great meeting and I appreciate, appreciate that.
Mr. Bishop, I don't have a good, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank the students from Christiansburg High School again for coming here. What do you, I went to next time that you folks meet at school, when do y'all have your meetings?
Every Tuesday.
Yes.
What time every Tuesday?
Right after. About three o'clock.
What time, sorry?
About three o'clock.
Okay, three o'clock?
Three o'clock.
Every Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You mean the library upstairs or?
Just me and Ms. Robbins closet.
Okay.
To.
All right. Somebody will know where you are if you want to come up, Brian. Very good, very good, very good.
Ready?
I am.
Okay. I'm going to make a request for closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, parentheses one, for the discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body. The closed meeting is being held for the discussion of our new town manager contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to go into closed session. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Number six, oh, we will take about a three, four minute break to clear the.
Okay, I move to certify that the town council, the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, to the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. That was a motion.
Second. A motion in the second. Any discussions? Thank you for reminding and prompting. Yes. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Number six, oh, the council action on the matter is, council has authorized me to complete the final details on Mr. Wingfield's contract. We had a few things that we wanted to negotiate. We reached, I think, a fair settlement on it and it's not, it's fair for me to say that his base salary will be a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year and we'll, there'll be a couple of other things we're going to do, but that's the base of the salary. Now, anything else to come for council?
I do have. Yeah. We mentioned about starting the meetings or the, about closing Hickok Street. I would like, given that that borders the Presbyterian Church.
I do plan on reaching out to them.
I would suggest meeting with the session so that they can understand what the town intends to do. I think they meet once a month, every Tuesday and then they can disseminate that to the rest of the congregation, but I think that would help out if they understand what we're going to do that instead of us.
We did discuss that in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, I think Randy had mentioned talking to all of the neighbors that would be effective.